We're good. Okay.
Yes, I believe so.
Linda, we are good on Facebook?
Now we are.
All right, thank you. Call the Board of Alderman Work Session for May the Fourth Be With You Day to order. We have two items. Well, we have one item on the agenda, but it's got a couple of sub bullets there. So, Ms. Wagner, do you want to start with the corner of 169 and Second Creek Road first?
Yeah, actually, if I can do a little bit of introduction so that we can, I think there's some overlap in some conversation, but we need to look at both of the items as the packet information outlines and as the agenda notes, we'd like to talk about a couple of proposals regarding use of city property. We've received a proposal with regard to use of city-owned property at the corner of 169 and Second Creek Road and an additional request with regard to the outdoor space at Courtyard Park. There's information in each of the packet or excuse me relating to each of the proposals included in the packet. The individuals who brought those requests forward are also here this evening. The request for you of 169 and Second Creek Road is brought forward by Brian, or excuse me, I'm sorry, Jamie Dodrell and Emile that Counts. And the request relating to space at the Courtyard Park is Shane Kreese. We also, I'll note, last week, Mr. Kreese reached out to Jack, Anna and I, and we had a conversation with him with regard to use of the property at the corner of Bridge and Meadow Street, the vacant gravel lot behind City Hall in the corner there at Bridge and, excuse me, Meadow. So I want to talk about that as well this evening. Really, in thinking about things, all of these areas are land owned by the city. And for use by a private entity, we need to go through a public process to ensure fairness and allocation of those land uses, but then also have an understanding, one, are there uses that we want at these spaces? And what stipulations or what requests would we be looking at with regard to each of those spaces? And they're all a little bit different. So I think we need some discussion there. But the memo does outline, you know, use of land should be consistent with city goals and desires. And there are a number of questions that we need to have addressed is what's the best use of that, each of those land, what is best or desired use? We have a lot of discussion going on in the community with regard to Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, the downtown area, open spaces. We have a Main Street group that is meeting and looking at things as well. We have other opportunities for private investment throughout the community that may be coming forward as well. So we want to know what is the desire of the board with regard to use of these particular pieces of property? And if we want to look at at use, what specifications or requirements would the board like to see included in each of those areas? And actually, I might start with the item that is not on the agenda right now because we have, if the board and new members of the board will recall, the land, the vacant lot at the corner of Meadow and Bridge Street. We had had a desire a couple of years back and put together a request for proposals for development of that lot that solicited proposals relating to a multi-use, multi- level facility, mixed use, including residential and commercial. And we put the request for proposals out two different times in 2019, received one response that did not result in a follow-up from those negotiations. Would like to just confirm with the board if, since we do have renewed interest in that area, if they would concur, if you all as a board would concur with posting that request for proposals again. And that's a pretty easy process. We could really, I think, ensure that the anticipation would be for the same type of use, a multi-level, mixed-use development. Or if there's something different or if the board would not, in the two ensuing years has decided that that's not what we would like to have occur at that space. So I'll be looking for direction from the board in that manner. And then might let Mr. Dodrell and Mr. Kreese kind of briefly outline their proposals. And then we have discussion about the two separate parcels. Does that make sense as a direction, Mr. Mayor?
Sounds good. So I'm going to start at the top as people are on my screen. So I'm going to go with Alderman Hartman first. And we're just talking about the lot, putting the RFP back out. What's your thoughts? You were a member of EDC in the past and I think you're aware of that one. So I'll go with Mr. Alderman Hartman first.
Thank you, Mayor. Absolutely. I think that the RFP that the city had, it could have been very well timed of not having participants in that. I think if the rest of the board agrees, I would certainly recommend that we move forward with that. Just in the fact that it would be great to have more retail apartments, whatever the developer has in mind to add to the downtown. So I think it's it's great that we have it in place and it'd be very easy to put that back out there.
Thank you. Chevalier, you are next, Alderman Chevalier.
Alrighty, I'll keep this short. I think anything that's going to bring traffic, housing, retail to the downtown area is good in my book. So I'm for it, whatever we can do to generate that that growth.
Thank you. Alderman Dan Uledol.
Yeah, I'm fine with putting that back out there.
Thank you. And you're a member of EDC when we did that too. So I think you're familiar with that one. Alderman Sarver.
I agree with Alderman Hartman, Alderman Chevalier and Alderman Uledol.
Thank you. Alderman Atkins.
I agree with everybody. The RFP in place is a great start.
All right. Alderman Kibelski.
I agree as well. I say we move forward.
Did I miss anyone? Ms. Wagner, is that?
That's the direction we need. And because we have that developed, we will be able to get that posted probably still this week.
Thank you.
We'll have a timeline and we'll get information to the board to let you know that timeline we put together as well.
Appreciate it. So on the agenda, I have the corner of 116, Highway 169, Second Creek Road first. So Mr. Dodrell, I will be up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So based on proposal, what we're trying to accomplish here is to help drive more awareness of what we're doing here in the community with Emile that Counts as well as our market, as well as with having that space on the corner, driving more folks to the downtown area as part, being part of the Main Street community as well. So we would have products and services out there on our tables to help folks into the downtown as well as drive more awareness with our products that we have fresh in the market. And that's really what we're trying to accomplish from Friday through Sunday. And that's really all the time that we would ask for that land is on the weekends and should help drive some of that lake traffic into the downtown area as well.
Okay. I'm going to go in a different order this time. So Alderman Sarver. Questions, comments, opinions on that one?
I think if the lot's empty and we're not using it for anything, I think that'd be fine. You know, someday hopefully we can build something on it or do something with it. But until then, we might as well use it for that.
Alderman Chevalier.
Yeah. My main concern with using that land for this purpose is we've already denied other folks access to that land to sell things and use it. And I just don't know if this is consistent with our previous messaging and what that land is real identified for. So I'm not necessarily in favor of that. I'm curious though, if this farmer's market thing, I mean, if this can work in conjunction with some of the other plans that we're looking to vet out today as well. So maybe that's not the right location for it. Maybe some, it should go somewhere else.
Thank you. And as John stated, Alderman Chevalier stated, you know, we really don't have an RFP in hand ready to go on this one. So that would be staff time and things like that. So next, Alderman Atkins.
If we, if I could-
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Marv. If I could just interject also, I want to make sure as we go through the discussion, if board members would like us to proceed with a process, what type of information would you want included in a proposal? What uses would you like to see? What requirements would you like to have? What questions do you have so that we can think through a process of what we would need to look through here?
Yeah. And sorry, I should have stated that upfront, you know, i- if we get a majority of the board wanting to do something, then we'll come to those agreement. But let's first go through it and just kind of see what the, and since we're not available, it's a little easier to get on Zoom and do this. Yes.
Who have we refused to let use that land?
We had requests the past couple of years for fireworks vendors that used to use it when Kindred had it. I think that was a couple of, I think we had that both years that we've had that land now that we talked about that. Okay, Alderman Atkins.
Since we denied other people in the past, we need to come up to a to a way to make a procedure on how we're going to go forward with that land until we build on it. That way, everybody's going to be, you know, happy with it. I do like the idea of bringing a food vendor there, especially a farmer's market. I would be cautious about in the process of making the contract on cleanliness, maintenance, you know, et cetera, et cetera, which I think Cynthia is already well aware of on how to bring up a proposal for that. I also do see an issue with the Second Creek Light, which is extremely short, that it could dry up some, some traffic issues. But I'm for it.
You live over in that area, right?
I do.
All right. Alderman Kibelski.
I do have several questions or would like to continue discussion. I don't feel it may be the best place for a farmer's market, but I would like to continue discussion. And I just think there's several questions, like who would be responsible maintaining the lands? Would there be a lease? What would the structure look like? I mean, I kind of have several questions that would like discussion or discussion on.
Okay.
That's kind of my process right now. I just don't know if it's the right time.
Okay. Alderman Hartman.
I really like the idea of having vendors there specific to what Jamie's doing and maybe other opportunities. I do voice some concern in the sense of not having anything in place that would open the opportunity up for others to have, you know, an opportunity to request for a proposal on that. And I know that's something the city, we're talking about as a board, and I know that's something we can do, but I just, I would not say no indefinitely, but I think we need to look at it a little bit closer and just make sure that we have the proper procedures and processes in place to give everybody the opportunity as we figure out what to utilize the city space for in the future.
Thank you. Alderman Uledol.
I agree with pretty much whatever things been said. We do need to have something in place for that usage until it's built on. I like the concept of what he's doing. And as said, if we do have an agreement where someone is to take that over, I don't want to, I want to make sure that whatever's not permanently built there looks good coming into the town. Make sure that we're not, we don't have semi-trailers or something like that parked on that property just to, we just got rid of a big bridge that was there for years. So yeah, I think we should, we should be doing something with that land because that would help grab attention. That there's more stuff going on in town than what's on the highway and help point people into the downtown area also. So we should be able to support him. And if we don't allow usage of that, I think we should be able to find him someplace to be.
Okay, thank you. So would everybody be okay if we, you know, work session this either, maybe just talk a little bit about that corner during our retreat or at a later work session where we can talk long-term strategy for that land and not make this staff priority for right now?
I'm fine with that.
I agree with that.
I'm good with that. Agreed.
Wagner, do you have the direction you need?
I believe we do.
Thank you.
Are there any staff that have any questions or anything that I've missed? Silence is golden.
Thank you for, Mr. Dodrell, for bringing this to us. You know, it's something really to think about. It's just, we've got a lot on our plate for this year and on the schedule. So with a limited amount of staff and their time is valuable. So we need to make sure this gets flushed out through the board process. If everybody was ready to redirect staff on other stuff right now, we could, we could move a little faster, but it seems like we need to think it out a little more. So, but appreciate your time in the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the board. Oh, Jamie and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item on the is the proposal from 111 North Bridge. I believe Mr. Kreese is here still. Give the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Per my initial conversations with the city, the Parks Department and the Main Street Group, the idea that I'm proposing is to create an outdoor dining space adjacent to Humphreys in the area that, you know, I call the alley portion of the park, but it's actually part of the park. So per this document we have on the screen, you know, there's some photos of some concepts of what we're looking for. So it'd be a two-story outdoor dining space with an open roof deck, covered first floor. It'd create a great option for outdoor dining downtown and really kind of take that area of the alley that's, you know, it's in the need of some maintenance and kind of create a an area that's kind of cohesive with the streetscape theme and, you know, the overall architectural design of the downtown area.
Thank you. Alderman Atkins or staff, do you have anything first before we move on to the Alderman? Either Matt or Cynthia or Chuck.
The only thing that I would add is this information has been presented to both the Parks and Recreation Board Committee, excuse me, and the Downtown Merchants Missouri Main Street Program. All liked the concept. There were some questions about it and, you know, we have had discussion about downtown in regard to the Courtyard Park with Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Think longer term, there are some of these concepts that apply. It's determining what makes sense and how and when.
Yeah. And one thing I would also like to mention, logistically, any amenity we add to a park also would have to go to P and Z. So this is just staff looking for direction to pursue this, even a ticket to P and Z, and then it would have to come back to the board after we did some sort of RFP. So there's a, this isn't a quick turnaround thing either. So I will start with Alderman Atkins.
I like the concept that was presented so far. I do like the additional eating area as well as the farmer's market. I really do like the idea of converting what we call the alley back to a Parks and Recreation Department. But we have a whole lot of agenda already with the Parks Strategic Command that I think needs to be looked at, monitored. And then this project here brought in a little bit later in time with the assistance of the downtown merchants as well as the parks to to see what fits in at that time. I think it's probably premature now to put that in since we're just starting our strategic plan.
Thank you. Alderman Uledol.
I like the concept. I like new things. I like some of it. I've had discussions with with a couple of you about concerns and things like that. It's it's a, it's a great idea. I'd like to see what it could turn into. More concept, more, more planning and things like that. So I think that's the way we're going with outdoor dining downtown, trying to add life during the nice weather. I think it could be something cool for downtown. So for the most part, I'm on board.
Thank you. Alderman Chevalier.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll echo, you know, kind of what Dan was saying. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be cool for downtown. I think that downtown is the place for this type of feature. Outdoor dining would just be so great for everybody, just listening to music out there, eating, things like that. So, see, I definitely want to see this move forward to more of a planning phase to try to see what, what the final product is going to look like.
Alderman Hartman.
Mayor, thank you. Shane, thank you for presenting this. Do you have a projection? And I know it's hard to tell today, but let's, let's say you're out, we're sort of back to a semi-normal dining. How many tables, how many extra folks it would seat from, from inside your restaurant, basically outside where you proposed this?
Yeah, good question. So, you know, our preliminary numbers are that it would probably increase the dining capacity from somewhere between 60 and 75% from what they currently have. So, you know, in terms of number of tables, I'm not quite sure what that translates to, but square footage of the building, I mean, basically the, the lower dining area and the roof or the upper dining area is about 3,000 square feet. So it would be, you know, like I said, probably somewhere in that 60 to 75% more additional capacity from what I've heard.
No, that's, that's fair. Thank you. It gives us a good idea. As the rest of the board, I, I really liked the concept. I know our workload is, is, is the city staff is heavy, but I think that this is something that my understanding that we could, we could issue an RFP as well. Not exactly sure on the timing of all that. That would be directed by Cynthia if the board decided to move forward, but I think that it's a great concept and it'll add to the downtown significantly.
Thank you. Alderman Kibelski.
I too agree with Dan as far as I would like to move forward with the RFP. I know timing is of the essence for everybody, but I think it would be a great addition to the downtown and would just tie in all the streetscape and just make it another great place for people to want to go hang out. So I would like to see more discussion and move forward with it.
Thank you. Alderman Sarver.
I like the idea. My only concern is, and I'm sure this can be worked out, but I don't see a way for, we've had some pretty big bands play in Smithville and hopefully there'll be some big bands coming in the future. I don't see a way for them to get to the stage very easily to set up equipment and do that kind of thing, but maybe there's a, that can be worked out. But before that alley was, you needed that alley. In fact, I've set my band up there before and if we didn't have that alley, I don't know how we would have done it. So that, that issue would have to be worked out, I guess.
Yeah. And that's the thing is we, you know, those kind of requirements is something that we really want to get in as part of the process, right? The major thing Cynthia needs tonight from us is, is this something we want staff spending time on or not? So it sounds like the consensus is this is worth spending time on. Am I hearing it right from everyone? And Linda, you could, you want to stop sharing so we can see it in gallery view that, because I have to spell up and down right now. So if we want to get a thumbs up to start on an RFP in the next couple of months.
I'm giving a thumbs up, but you can't see me.
Right. So that, I mean, that, so, so with that, what are some of the things you'd like staff to add to that RFP? Steve, you mentioned access for vans. What else do you guys want to say? And you guys can just unmute yourself or raise your hand, Alderman Atkins.
Are we dedicated as the park space to just, just one restaurant or who's going to maintain it? Who's going to clean it? Who's going to supply? Is it just for restaurants only or is, are we playing favorites downtown? Or is it going to be a part of the Parks Department?
Well, I think it would be a lease, right? I mean, that's kind of what, what I was understanding when it was brought to the Parks Board or the Parks Committee was that it would be more of like a lease situation, most likely.
Yeah. And if you look at our downtown guidelines currently for the outdoor dining spaces, the adjacent property is the only one able to lease it. So for Nellie's, for Chops, you know, Humphreys can't lease the space in front of Chops currently. This is an adjacent property. They don't have the, you know, outdoor dining space that we built like we built for along the other side of Main Street. So I think that's one of the requirements we'd have to really look at is, you know, adjacent property, what the lease looks like.
Well, I think also if we could clarify lease or sale, I mean, do we want to look at selling the property or is it leasing? As the mayor indicated, we do have downtown design guidelines. Those were developed as we finalized streetscape. And a significant amount of time has passed. We went through a pandemic and had some impact on that. We, we do need to step back and review that again. That may be, may be something that would be preferable as part of review with this. So those are kinds of things that we're looking for from board too, with regard to what you'd like to see included in and what we would submit for requests.
So would you guys like to do a work session dedicated to this one? Or do you want us to give Cynthia some things? I mean, we still have time tonight. We've got 20, 32 minutes until our actual session starts. Do you want to spend some time giving some guidelines and kind of get a draft RFP put together before we do a work session? Alderman Uledol?
I think we're going to have to, we're going to have to table it and think about it before we start throwing stuff at her completely. The lease or the sale part, that's, it's kind of a big decision to throw together and in a, in a half hour. But I think we should do a work session in the future, in the near future. In regards to this topic also, it's, it's also concerns with outdoor dining or in that would then everybody downtown's a player on that. So we need to make sure that we're still clear and we're following those guidelines or setting those guidelines further in stone of how we're going to operate outdoor dining.
Okay.
We're certainly blessed with a restaurant operator on our board, but I'm particularly interested in hearing is we, we have this future work session in the future, near future from Shane, just specifically on what it's been like to operate a restaurant. I know you've spent a significant amount, significant amount of time, you know, investing in downtown like others have. And so I'd like to kind of hear what his thoughts are when we do have this work session or, or leading up to it specifically what he has in mind besides the 20 by 75 and the upper and lower level and kind of how he wants to operate that operationally, how he divisions the flow for us that aren't restaurant operators. So that's, that's all I have to.
So I'm looking at the planning calendar. Does anybody else have any other comments? Sorry, go ahead, Alderman Atkins.
I just wonder if we could make it like a food court. I just wonder if we could make it like a a food court or shared food court. I hate to tie it down to just to one person or two people. Maybe it don't have to be a food court. Maybe other vendors downtown can use it for special events. Just just keep them options open.
Yeah, and I think that's, if you look at the proposal, I think that's what the farmer's market overhang area is for, is not for Humphreys use, it's for parks for vendor use. Am I understanding that right, uh Shane?
Yeah, absolutely. Um one thing I would like to add to just for clarification is, you know, my original concept and proposal, this would be one hundred percent privately funded. So all maintenance, all upkeep, everything associated would fall um on myself, the cost of construction, everything. So really, you know, the the discussion was more of what makes more sense, having a long-term land lease or potential to purchase the the property. And either either one is I'm open to. But again, you know, the cost of the construction of this, maintaining it, taking care of it would have zero um impact on the city.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak?
Here, go for it.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I would definitely like to look more at the lease side versus the purchase side. Do you have, did you have more discussion about that in the next work session?
Yeah, I'm kind of, I I have that same opinion. I mean, I'd rather see more of a lease scenario than than a sale. Um that way, we would still be able to control, have some control over um over that space.
Anyone else?
Uh one other thing I'd like to add is when we do have that work session, um I I would like to see maybe some um some of the downtown uh Main Street representation on the call to kind of get some of their opinions and um what what their thoughts are on it as well.
Yeah, and I'd reach out to a few of them to to join today, and I haven't, I haven't seen them join. Um I know I know Lish is dealing with some stuff right now, but um yeah, we'll we'll definitely make sure they get the invite next time. So I'm looking at the schedule and we have our presentation of the Parks Master Plan on the fifteenth of June. Is that still the date we're looking at? Or is it gonna be pushed?
I was just looking at that and I didn't have a chance. Matt, have you um, do you recall timing that we're looking at now?
Yeah, I I would say it'd be more at the end of uh, and to me, I think we were looking at that first uh weekend in June, that first meeting in June that uh was coming up. I think we had, like Memorial Day was kind of in that last week of May. We're looking at that June work session, that first one.
First, I'm not sure they're gonna be ready in less than a month. Are they gonna be ready in less than a month?
I I'd stick with June fifteenth then, if that's the date you're thinking, Matt.
Yeah, I think that was, was it the June fifteenth, Cynthia? I don't have the planning calendar.
We have a, we have a June first meeting also.
Yeah, June first.
Maybe it was the June fifteenth meeting.
That's where we tentatively have it right now.
Yeah, yeah, then it's that one then. Yeah, sorry.
Any, would anybody be opposed to starting that meeting early? So we can get the Parks Master Plan information and then discuss this a little more then.
Mayor, I want to note also, we have that outlined as a discussion of the capital improvement plan that would be CIP and all of our major funds plus utilities. Um so there's some pretty significant discussion there as well. So if if the those are three pretty beefy items.
Okay. I mean, it's then the next meeting would be July twentieth, and it looks like it's tax rate. I don't think we'll have that by July twentieth because we usually don't.
Uh no, but employee handbook and compensation plan and schedule the fees. Again, that's budget. Any of these we can absolutely do. Um it's, they might be a little relatively lengthy and maybe we look at a start of a regular session earlier. I um I don't know, we can, we can look at, like you said, we may need to start earlier to ensure we've got some, plenty of time for discussion.
Well, like you said, we tack it on to the end of the regular session because June first is pretty dang light.
Yes, yes.
But I'd rather, I really would like to see the master plan before we talk through this more.
Yeah.
Tack it on to the end of the June fifteenth regular session.
Absolutely.
It's just five resolutions right now and that's the chamber, two of those are the chambers barbecue thing.
Yeah.
And are we gonna have those bids for the camp? Yeah. Are those RFPs going out for the projects for the raw water and and lift stations?
We um those, we just about have that information available, don't we, Chuck?
So we'll have that on the fifteenth agenda.
I don't think they'll be ready for award by the fifteenth. Well.
That's a quick turnaround.
Possibly not. I think that'll probably push that.
So I think the fifteenth, after we've seen the Parks Master Plan, after we talk more a little bit of CIP, maybe that's a good discussion after those, just kind of give everybody time that that gives everybody, you know, a month and a half to think about this.
Yeah.
And make sure we get some of the Main Street folks on and and all that good stuff. And then potentially after that, we think maybe August P and Z at the earliest to make sure this is, well, yeah, because it'd be kind of tight on the July P and Z to just say this was appropriate for a park too. So
Yeah. Pardon?
I'd leave that up to Jack on scheduling that one.
Yeah, well, I think it'll depend in part on some of the feedback we get from the board on the fifteenth.
Yep.
There any changes or anything that needs to to occur there?
Yep.
So when this is related, so we'll have kind of general discussion um with regard to this is specific to the proposal of Courtyard Park.
Somebody had dogs barking in the background. You cut out a little bit.
Sorry, go ahead. Okay, you, all right. So this this will be focused on the courtyard park proposal. Okay? I think um staff, are there any questions that we have in thinking about what we might be bringing forward? Um if anything, we need clarification from the board on in order to bring something forward on the fifteenth.
Somebody's got a Okay, that's all we had on the agenda. Is there any uh anything else we need to adjourn? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. And just to double check, Linda, I didn't see anybody come on for public comment or anything, right? You missed it, okay?
All right, we sent the invitation.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Thank you. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 All right, we stand adjourned. I'll see you all at seven.
Hey Chuck, don't forget to mute.